Good morning. We hereby reconvene the March 2022 meeting of the State Board of Education. And Brooks, can you please call the roll to reestablish the quorum?
Good morning. Member Bonanca.
Here.
President Darlene Hammond.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Present.
Member McQuillan. Member Olken.
Present.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Present.
Member Patilla Brownson.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Terrific. We are going to be having a public hearing. And I want to describe the way in which members of the public can dial in for public comment. You should view the live stream of the meeting to know at what time we will ask for public comment for each item on the agenda and for the hearing. Public comment will be provided by dialing the phone number and participant access code, and then following each of the operator's prompts. Upon dialing in, callers will be added to a caller queue. The operator will notify callers when it is their turn to provide public comment. We will also ask the public calling in for public comment to please turn down the speaker volume of their computers if they're following the live feed in order to avoid an echoing effect. Public comment is limited to one minute for each speaker per item. Item 13 is the general public comment item during which members of the public may provide comment on matters that are not specifically listed on the board's agenda. Board members, please mute your microphones when not speaking and keep your cameras on as much as possible to ensure that we maintain a quorum throughout today's virtual meeting. For each item on the agenda, there will be an opportunity for board members to raise your hand using the Zoom participant window if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment. Item 11 is where we're beginning today. Item 11 is a public hearing regarding the Eagle Collegiate Academy. And this is to consider revocation of the charter pursuant to California Education Code 47607H. And the CDE recommendation is that the State Board hold a public hearing on March 10th to consider the final decision to revoke the charter. If the State Board finds sufficient grounds for revocation, the department recommends that the State Board adopt the final decision to revoke Attachment 1, and that the State Board provide notice to the ECA Board, the Eagle Collegiate Academy Board, that revocation becomes effective on Wednesday, March 30th, 2022. If the State Board takes action to revoke the charter, the CDE recommends that the State Board direct Eagle Collegiate Academy to immediately begin the closure procedures set forth in the ECA Charter. This item will be presented by Stephanie Ferland of the CDE. Stephanie, you may begin.
Thank you. Good morning, President Darling Hammond and board members and Chief Deputy Mary Nicely. As President Darling Hammond mentioned, today consists of the California State Board of Education holding a public hearing and considering the revocation of the Eagle Collegiate Academy Charter. The CDE's recommendation today is that the SBE adopt the final decision to revoke, and that the SBE provide notice to the Eagle Collegiate Academy Board that revocation becomes effective on Wednesday, March 30th, 2022, and direct ECA to immediately begin the closure procedures set forth in the ECA Charter and memorandum of understanding between the SBE and ECA. Just as a reminder, we went over this yesterday, but the grounds for revocation per California Education Code 47607F is that a charter may be revoked if substantial evidence indicates that the charter school did any of the following: committed a material violation of any of the conditions, standards, or procedures set forth in the charter; failed to meet or pursue any of the people outcomes identified in the charter; failed to meet generally accepted accounting principles; or engaged in fiscal mismanagement; violated any law. The CDE has provided substantial evidence that ECA engaged in fiscal mismanagement, committed material violations of the charter, and committed violations of law. The CDE outlines the specific violations committed by ECA in item 5 of yesterday's meeting agenda. So the summary is, is that the CDE concludes that there is no fiscal viability for ECA moving forward. Based on a CDE analysis, the CDE estimates that ECA will have an estimated negative ending cash balance of over $480,000 and a negative ending fund balance close to $600,000 by June 2022. ECA will fail to meet its financial obligations, including but not limited to staff salaries, pension obligations, and benefits by May 2022, and payments beginning in July 22, 2022 will be offset to recover any remaining LCFF overpayment. The CDE has communicated with the districts of residence for ECA's current students, as well as the Los Angeles County Office of Education. All are prepared to help ECA's 12 students transition to other educational options within their area. In conclusion, the CDE recommends that the SBE take the following actions: adopt the final decision to revoke the ECA Charter and provide notice to the ECA Board that revocation becomes effective on March 30th, 2022; direct ECA to immediately begin the closure procedures set forth, as stated earlier, in the Charter and the memorandum of understanding between SBE and ECA. The public comment slide is on the screen. And that's it for my presentation this morning. I believe you're on mute, President Darling Hammond.
Thank you. I hereby open the public hearing at 8:37 a.m. We will first chair for representatives of Eagle Collegiate Academy. They will have 12 minutes to make their presentation. After the presentation from the school, we will open up the phone line for public comment from individuals who are not part of the school's presentation. Dr. Akoya Johnson, you may begin. I'm not hearing you. I'm seeing a slide.
I had to unmute.
All right, and now we are not seeing slides yet.
Yes, I have to start sharing it again.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Now. I just want to go to play from start. Yes, okay. Now let's come back. Screen. Good morning, Madam President of the California State Board of Education, Dr. Darlene Hammond. Good morning, Honorable State Board Members of Education. Good morning, CDE staff. And I thank you again for hearing us today. Today, I would like to spend time going over the fact that we have received some additional pledges that we shared with CDE that were not included in the results and the reports that they presented. And so, we believe that the notice was sent, but that it included facts that were outdated, and that CDE omitted all the recent facts and recent responses that we submitted to them. And one of them is that we received $530,000 in pledges, and this is enough to be able to repay the LCFF overpayment, provide the required budget reserve, and thereby eliminating all the fiscal solvency alleged violations. If you, if you look at that slide in front of you, you would see the items in bold. With the 530K pledges that we received, we would have $85,431 as a net surplus for 2021-22. We would have a fund balance of $65,087, and we would have a fund balance as a percent of expenses with the 530K at 7.06%. Our team worked really hard with a fundraising campaign that we did, reached out to different groups, and some are still sending us funds to help us keep this school open. And so as a result of that, being the fact that this is the main concern, we believe that we did provide evidence to show that we can be fiscally solvent. But this was not shared and was not reported in the CDE response. As a result of that, we are showing as well that the facts that were included about the facility did not include the Caltrans information showing that it has, the site has been cleared. It omitted the fact that our future site has received a Los Angeles County Regional Planning Site Plan approval, which will allow us to begin the process of placing modulars on the site. We did not continue with that route because CDE required us to find a place we can use right away, and so we went to the church site. It omitted the floor plan that shows, and this floor plan was reviewed by the California Los Angeles County Regional Planning Building and Safety Department, and showed the occupant load for it to be used to be up to 76. That was not shared. So we believe also that the information about the non-classroom program was also not updated. The facts are outdated because once we have a facility to use, then that will eliminate the non-classroom-based alleged violations. And we remain confident that we have already addressed the independent study written agreement alleged violations. We also show that in terms of enrollment, the information is also outdated because it doesn't show the response that we submitted, showing that we have received substantiated registrations that could be used for this school year as well as next school year. And we're not sure why CDE keeps not adding this information and creating the false impression of any intent on our part not to provide the accurate information. They know that we make projections, and then they know that we also have to show them who walked through the door when the school opens. So as a result of that, we are asking you to please deny the notice of intent to revoke. We are asking, and we are requesting that ECA be allowed to use the Crown Church facility that has been prepared for the students, which has been cleared by Caltrans, to enroll more students for this school year, and to be allowed to complete the remaining five-year term since we have already received 92 applications that could be substantiated for the 2022-23 school year. We believe that if allowed, we should be able to enroll students again for this school year. However, should CDE, should SBE, I'm sorry, decide that you would not allow us to continue, and that you would go ahead and revoke this charter and deny our students the opportunity to continue, we are then requesting to surrender this charter as of June 30, 2022 for the following reasons: We implore your humanity and ask you that you please heed the askance, the pleas of our families and students who have requested and are asking to be allowed to finish out this school year so that they will not have to be pulled during the middle of the year, which will devastate and disrupt their lives. We are asking for the students to be allowed to use this facility, which they've been promised for so long, which we spent considerable time, the families came to put it together, to set it up, so that it will be ready for CDE to review. We do have, contrary to what CDE keeps saying, enough funds to be able to finish out this school year and meet all our obligations. So for that reason, we are asking for you to please allow us and allow the students to reach the end of the school year should you decide to revoke, and then allow us to be able to surrender the charter by then. Here is the site tour that I was unable to show you yesterday of the current site, the way it was set up, so that you can see that it's really ready to go. The Caltrans has now cleared it and showing that there is no reason why that that can be a viable school site for us. And it's been set up so that students can use this site. And the students and their families were very excited when they came to visit this site and couldn't wait to get in and just start learning. And it has room and enough space for all the students that we currently have and will have. And a playground for them as well. And then as for the next school year, we also have a slide to show you of what we plan to provide our students using the modular classrooms. The Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning has approved our site plan review process, and we are ready to begin to be able to place modular classrooms here, which is the next phase, and we have plenty of time to be able to accomplish that. Again, our families, we're looking forward to this site, and we're looking forward to starting their new year at this site with the modular buildings that you're watching right now during this tour. So we do have a place for us to be able to start next school year, and we have a plan to be able to do that. We continue to conduct a vigorous enrollment campaign using paid enrollment companies that know what they are doing in addition to our own efforts of door-to-door knocking. We know where our families are. We have spoken to them. You have heard them. And we are asking you to please, please allow us to finish what you allowed us to start. We have been trying to get, do everything that CDE has asked us to do. We have reached out to them to ask in emails that can be substantiated what they need us to do to make this happen. We generally don't get any response back, or we get nothing saying that we could move this forward. So we have shown the desire to work with CDE, to do what they've asked us to do, and we continue to show that desire if you allow us to continue to serve our students and our families and to provide for them this education that they have selves, they themselves have shown that they are happy with, and we want to be able to serve more families who are really ready for this to happen, if you let us. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will open the phone line for public comment, and we will need the public comment slide displayed. Members of the public wishing to provide comment on this public hearing may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that will be shown momentarily. And I'm going to pause and wait for the slide. It may be that...
Dr. Akoya Johnson, would you mind stop? Thank you so much.
Okay. Members of the public, we encourage you to please state your name and affiliation for the record when you call in. There is the telephone number and the participant access code. Turn down the speaker volume of your computer if you are following the live feed. And speakers will be limited to one minute each. We also ask, as always, that callers be respectful. Comments at this time must be related to the item before the board at this time. Are there any public comments?
Yes, we have about 19 people signed up for public comment. I will open the phone line now. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, my name is Addison, and I'm the Director of Charter Services for the Acton Aguado Unified School District. I'm here in support of the revocation of Eagle Collegiate Academy Charter School. We work collaboratively to hold operating procedures of our charters at high standards and accountability. Eagle Collegiate Academy has in the past four years made four unsuccessful attempts to obtain approval to establish a charter school within the Acton Aguado boundaries. A great concern to our district has been the charter's consistent inability to give assurances of the appropriate operating requirements for the school, inability to provide reasonable enrollment numbers, and inability to provide financial plans that do not rely heavily on aggressive initial enrollment and growth to cover its projected expenditures. Providing additional fiscal support, facilities, and time will not rectify the inherent deficiencies that have been consistent from years ago with planning and the implementation of Eagle Collegiate's educational...
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Yes, my name is Gene Stabe. I'm a local pastor here in the Acton Aguado area, and I am in support of the Eagle Collegiate Academy. The staff and the administration are excellent. I like the program that they have, and it's needed here in our community. I've been in here, this community, for over 22 years. The teachers are the best and go the extra mile. I've witnessed students and teacher interactions, and they're well behaved and eager to learn. And so I just wanted to say this would be wonderful to see them continue to meet here in our community. And I know they have a facility that's available to them, so I really encourage you to consider them and continue to keep them open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, good morning. My name is Ajicama Koye. I'm a father of two children. My kids go to school at Eagle Collegiate Academy. I'm begging on behalf of them for not shutting the darn school because the teachers have a great program for the children. Since my kids started going to that school, they've been doing good in the academic, and they really love going there. I will pray for us to continue letting our students go into this school.
Please don't shut up our school. We need it so we can be smarter, or we will just don't know how to do things that much. I want to learn things. If we don't have the school, we want to learn things. And we must be able to get real school, get how to do online school. I would be sad.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Good morning. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. Okay, moving on. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Jolie. I'm a mother of two kids at ECA. And I'm here to support them. My kids are really happy with the school. They have been learning so much. The staff, everybody has been so supportive for my kids. I mentioned this to them last night about closing school, and they got really sad. And I'm really worried about them emotionally because they're really happy with the teachers. So I would like you guys to consider this, to leave the school open. I know it's going to be a great opportunity, not just for the kids, but for everybody, for our community. I mean, there's so much to say about this school, and I'm really happy. I'm really thankful for this school, for everybody. So please consider this, and please leave that school open. Give them the opportunity to become, you know, somebody, some special, you know, kids and people in this community. So consider this call, consider this message, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Yes, my name is Whitney Ebanks. I was looking to enroll my son for the next coming year into this school once I saw the curriculum they offered. It's really unmatched in terms of what the other schools in the area are offering. I was super excited, the idea of smaller classrooms, plus being able to have after-school care is like beyond needed, especially with folks like me trying to get back out here, get back into work. And, you know, we need that extra help with the after-school care. A school like this, it's a shame that it doesn't have a chance to really get off the ground. If there's small things that can be rectified, it would be awesome if you guys could just lay it out clearly, give a reasonable timeframe, and then allow this school to actually have a chance to thrive and succeed. During a pandemic, everything is upside down. The school, you know, from my understanding, kind of started in the midst of all that. It really should be given a fair chance. Education is important, and it should be top priority in this country.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up.
By shooting it down like this.
Thank you, caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. You have one minute.
Jeffrey Forrest, a board member with Eagle Collegiate Academy. And I'm calling to ask that you give generous consideration to allowing Eagle Collegiate Academy to continue to deliver the kind of excellence and educational stewardship that it has done since its founding. Yes, it is struggling, but if you go back in history, many of the schools that originally opened throughout our country often had the same exact struggles that Eagle Collegiate Academy have had. I believe that given this opportunity, we will see that this specific school will provide the kind of equity and access that many of our students who are struggling from communities of color desperately need. Thank you, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Ken Higginbotham, President, Board of Directors for Eagle Collegiate Academy. It is imperative that you allow this exceptional institution of learning for these children, and in some cases, in underlying areas, to have the education that they deserve. You know, if you shut it down right now, you are depriving all of these children and the family the opportunity to excel. You've heard the comments, and you've heard the statements made that are totally, totally justifiable. I highly encourage you, allow us to move forward and provide better students, which are better citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Dawn Hakim, and I am calling to voice my support for Eagle Collegiate Academy. There is not another high-performing, high-test score charter school in this area. And not only that, the opportunity to be in a primary year's international baccalaureate program, this is something that these kids will benefit from for a lifetime. I please urge you, beg you, to consider giving us a chance, letting us get into a location, and then see how it goes because there are so many people working behind the scenes with passion, and I am confident it will be a success. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. This is Jack Ritter, and I just ask you, please provide ECA with the ability to use the approved facility to help us finish out the year and not disrupt the student's development, and thus allowing the school the opportunity to enroll more students. I just hope that you think about students. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Ashley Tussell. I am the second and third grade teacher at Eagle Collegiate Academy. And I just want to please ask you to please help ECA and please allow them to remain open. These students will be devastated if this school closes. They're doing so well. They're learning... These students will be devastated if this school closes. They're doing so well. They're learning so much. And the idea of having them have to start at a brand-new school in the middle of the year is so heartbreaking for them. I ask that you please allow the school to continue and to allow these families to get the chance to get their students into a school that is now in person and that is basically everything that these students have been dreaming of and these parents have been dreaming of. Please do not shut this school down. And if there is a chance that it has to be shut down, please let the students stay till the end of the school year. Don't have them have to uproot their lives in the middle of the school year. They're doing so well. Please think about the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, you're live. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you so much. My name is Eliana Howe and I'm here to voice my support for ECA. And basically, I know this is a brand-new school and it's just everything that the parents have been dreaming to have in this area. It's gonna be a nice, safe location for them to send their children to. And they will have an after-school program. And it's just an amazing academic program they have going. Also, I have been there myself and I think it's an amazing place. And also, I have seen the students in the classroom and they are doing amazing. Please keep the school open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, good morning. My name is Johanna Chavez and I'm a mother of second-grade student. I'm asking you please to support ECA and consider it to be open. I see in Aguado Dulce, we don't have too many schools and I applied for, I leave once. And my kids still on the waiting list. And I see the other schools that are closest to me is in Acton. And it's a little bit far for me because I have another theory, middle school. And please give a chance to have another option in our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Ruth Posey, Community Member. I'm calling to support Eagle Collegiate Academy. At this point in the school year, I think it would be unfair to the children and the families to interrupt instruction. The kids and the families deserve to go to this school and the kids definitely deserve to continue learning and thriving with their classmates and teachers. So please consider keeping the school open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kristen and I support Eagle Collegiate Academy. Please consider keeping the school open for the children and the community. Again, it would be sad and ashamed to close the school down, especially in the middle of school year. The school has a great education program. It's good for the community, the teachers, the staff, and the students. They're doing well. Please don't shut the school down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Isabella and I support Eagle Collegiate Academy. I support their mission and their values, their strong core values. I see how caring and dedicated the ECA staff is to one another, especially to students and families. And I know that my children will receive a quality education. So I ask that you please consider keeping the school open for the children, especially the students of color and the community because of the rigorous education that is not widely available in the community. Especially in the international baccalaureate program and the multiple languages, Korean, Spanish, not really seen in this community. And it would really help if you keep it for this year and for the next year to see they are in person and they experience ECA as it should be, as it is.
Thank you caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Brandy Urban and I am a mother of a pre-K student at ECA. And me and my family support this wonderful school and the staff and administration. We are more than dedicated to this school. My daughter has been thriving and learning and just loving everything that ECA has to offer. I believe that if we're able to get this school open and let the kids really come in and experience what this developmental plan and all the things that they have to offer the kids, it can really go really far and I'm more than certain more parents will come and really be able to see what ECA has to offer and more students will be able to be a part of this wonderful program. So please leave the school open, give them a chance, let us open up. Let our kids really experience all the great academics they have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, State Board Members. My name is Lorraine Richards and I am a classroom teacher representing California Teachers Association. CTA supports the CDE's recommendation that the State Board adopt the final decision to revoke the ECA charter. As stated by my colleague yesterday, the issues that CDE outlined in the item are egregious and led to ECA being overfunded by almost half a million. ECA's shifting attendance actions are reminiscent of the A3 scandal and we believe it would be prudent for the CDE to investigate ECA's actions to determine if it was growth mismanagement, growth incompetence, or fraud. As educators, we are deeply committed to the success of each student. That is why we urge the State Board to send a message that these types of actions will not only be punished via revocation action, but also with legal action whenever warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Uzama Kamaduski. I'm just asking the Board to allow, to allow ECA to be opened and not close it. I beg you guys to please allow them some time to put in place everything that is required of them because the school is exceptional. They offer good curriculum and kids, they love everything about the school. So please think about the children and let the school remain open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Hannah Ward. I'm a parent of a third grader, Andrew. And I please ask that you continue to have Eagle Collegiate Academy school open. My son has been thriving and I wish that you could give him an opportunity to soar in an interesting environment. He was a homeschool child. He has been thriving in this environment. And I believe that if you take this away from him, he will take back steps into what he was a couple of years ago. So I really plead that you continue to give him an opportunity. It just sank in his brain that his school might be closing and he was not happy and he was very upset in learning that his school might be closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller with the last four digits of the number six eight three one, you are live. Please start your public comment now. Okay, moving on. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Kenny Gonzalez. I'm a parent of a third grader. His name is Jaden Gonzalez. And this morning, he was very upset and he's like, mommy, we need to call because I don't want my school to be closed. I believe that they need an opportunity to have a physical building and to build more relationship with their peers. As they're being doing now through those computers, there's an excellent chance for growth. Please give us the opportunity. Don't close the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending in the last four digits, one zero zero zero, please start your public comment now. Okay, it looks like nobody is on the line. That concludes public comment for item number eleven.
Thank you very much. At this point, with no further public comments, I'd like to close the public hearing at nine ten AM and we will now begin board discussion. And I'd like to ask our liaison, Vice President Glover Woods, if she would like to make some initial comments.
Thank you, President Darling-Hammon. I'd first like to just reiterate my appreciation for all of the callers that called in today for public comment, the students, the families, the staff of Eagle Collegiate Academy, as well as others who have voiced their thoughts and ideas. I do want to underscore something that I said on yesterday, which is my ongoing concern for the fiscal viability and solvency for the school. I have a few clarifying questions that I'd like to ask when we open up for discussion. And I will hold my questions until other board members have a chance to ask as well. The last point that I'd like to make before we go into our discussion is the acknowledgement of the school districts in the area and the Los Angeles County Office of Education who have indicated that they will be assisting any families should the Board decide to revoke the charter during this school year. They will be in assistance to quickly ensure that any students enrolled in Eagle Collegiate Academy are enrolled in a local school area per what is wanted and decided by their families. So I do appreciate that as well. At this time, President Darling-Hammon, I will hold my additional comments and my questions until my fellow board members have opportunity to ask and discuss as well. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm looking for, please use the raise hand function to let me know if you want to make a comment. Member McQuillan.
Thank you. And I want to thank all the callers for calling in also to try to support their school. Appreciate all the callers. I have a clarifying question if I can ask.
Please do.
In the report from CD staff, we heard, I think I heard, twelve students were attending in November. And it sounded like most of the learning was occurring online. And is that still the case this month of March? Do we know?
It is.
Thank you.
We have Member Louis and Member Escobedo. Member Louis?
Thank you, President Darling-Hammon, and thank you for Dr. Johnson for the presentation and also for the callers. I just have a clarifying question and then just one initial question. ECA talks about the acquisition of the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in pledges and we have the concern about ongoing fiscal, meeting those fiscal obligations. And so going forward, I mean, we have to look beyond this year and into future years. And I think Vice President Glover Woods answered my question, but I just want to ask straight out. We are still concerned about fiscal responsibilities and the charter being able to meet those going forward. Am I correct? The five hundred and thirty dollars in pledges would just help them take care of obligations in current year? Is that correct?
It is. We don't have any... The information about those pledges came in actually while I was presenting yesterday. So we don't have anything formal in terms of the pledges or whether these pledges can be verified, that sort of thing. But even giving the school the benefit of the doubt that they certainly can get this money, typically what the department does is they don't include soft money in budgeting analyses just for the reasons that you outlined, Member Louis. And yes, even if giving them the benefit of the doubt and that they would be able to receive this money from the pledges, they would still be in the red at the end of the school year. And it would, and yes, it would not dig them out of the fiscal hole that they are in.
Okay, thank you for that. And if I could, I have one more question, please. The, your suggestion or request to extend the closure date to June thirtieth, what fiscal impacts would that place on them or additional fiscal impacts or deficits? I guess if we extended it to that date, if that was even considered.
Right. Well, based on our analysis, they will not have enough money to make it to the end of the school year. And so I'm not sure, and I'm sure Judy Sias can weigh in if she needs to, but I'm not sure what the liability is for the Board or the department if they do run out of money and cannot pay their expenses and their teacher salaries and retirement benefits and all of that that goes along with that. But our analysis shows that they will not, they will not be able to sustain through the end of the school year. It's not, wanting to close a school in the middle of school year is not something that we would want to do unless there was no other option.
Thank you.
Judy, did you want to weigh in on that?
Yes, Judy Sias, Chief Counsel for the State Board. Based on CD E's projections, they will run out of money in May. Again, Stephanie testified yesterday, there are some concerns about whether or not they will have sufficient funds to meet their obligations for staff salaries, staff benefits, health benefits, as well as pension benefits. In the past, there has been some question about liability, should pension benefits not be made, whether it falls onto the County Office of Education or the state. So it gets pretty complicated when the pension obligations are not met. And obviously, when staff salaries and benefits aren't able to be met, that also can create quite a few problems for the school and the staff.
Thank you. Member Escobedo?
Actually, that was one of my comments is, you know, they have four point five FTEs with twelve students and the expenditures, and if they obtain a school side, the expenditures then will increase even further, will increase further and the gap will just widen. So my understanding, there has been no attempt in decreasing expenditures or increasing revenues. Is that right, Stephanie? And that they will lose, they will run out of money by May.
That is our analysis and you're correct. And I'm sure Member Glover Woods can attest to this. This was a conversation that the ACCS also had during their discussions in terms of of the number of staff they had for the small amount of students and whether they've made the appropriate reductions in expenditures for what they have and we have found that they have not.
And typically, when a charter is closed, we liquidate assets. And my understanding, there are no assets at this-
They don't own a facility.
Right.
And they don't have much left in their bank account. And so there wouldn't be too many assets as far, I mean, we really need to do a total review of it, but I don't think there are many.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from members of the Board? Member Patio Bronson and then, go ahead, please.
I just want to appreciate all the callers who voiced their concern and also appreciation of what the school has provided thus far. And also recognize that I think that the leaders of the school and the teachers have had the best of intentions, have tried to bring forward something that is innovative and responsive to the opportunity to grow something new and exciting. And also at the same time- And also, at the same time, recognize that part of running a school system is more than that, and it requires a level of oversight of the finances and the facilities that we just aren't seeing. And I do think there have been multiple outreaches to the school to try and help them cure some of these challenges. But we have a fiduciary responsibility as board members to actually ensure that it is not just innovation, but it's innovation that can actually live within the bounds of a public use of funds. The one question I did want to ask, and a number of callers, I think, referenced this, is if you can just talk a little bit more about what the options are for families as they navigate what happens at the end of March thirty first. In part, it seems like there might be some misinformation as to what families believe their options to be, that they have to do online only as their only resource or option. And if CDE folks could talk to that.
Certainly. So we have determined the districts of residence for all of the twelve students who are currently enrolled in ECA. We have reached out to each of the districts where those students reside and have gotten written confirmation from each of those districts that they are ready and willing to place students in classroom-based instruction, if that's what they choose immediately. We've also received written confirmation, and you heard from Los Angeles County Office of Ed yesterday, that they are also ready to work not only with the districts and helping them place students, but with the families themselves for any district programs or any charter also. If they want to remain in a charter school, there are lots of charter options in Los Angeles County that may not even be in the districts that the students reside in, but may be accessible to them. So LA County Office of Education also is ready to help place families in the appropriate educational options. And certainly, those could be classroom-based, or if they wish to stay in non-classroom-based, there can be non-classroom-based programs found for them.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members? Member Glover Woods?
Thank you. Just a couple of clarification questions for Director McFarland. Could you let us know if you have received the evidence of the Caltrans approval that was mentioned during the presentation? As well as, do we have information or evidence of a property that has been secured for the modulars that were indicated for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
So no, we have not received any formal communication as required by statute from Caltrans. I understand that the director of the school has communicated informally with one of the consultants at Caltrans, but ed code requires Caltrans to send the Department of Education a formal notice of approval or disapproval within thirty days, and we have not yet received that. And in terms of a facility, no, they do not have a facility already leased for next year. We did just two days ago check with the Realtor of the lot that Dr. Johnson mentioned earlier, and while they did have a lease with them earlier in the school year, that lease is no longer valid. So as of this moment right now, as far as we know, they do not have a lease for the next school year, nor do they have modulars already rented and ready to go. Right now, that lot is a completely empty lot. And just for the record, that lot is in the same area as the current facility that they're leasing, which is a short-term lease, so that lease, the current lease will end at the end of June, and will have the same aeronautics requirement. So they will still need to get a Caltrans clearance on the new lot as well before they lease anything new, if it's the same lot that we're thinking of. So as of today, they do not have a lot already leased and ready to go for next school year.
Any further questions or discussion from the board? Then I see that Dr. Ogoa, Koya Johnson, is raising her hand. Can I ask you for... Whether you have a last statement you want to make?
Yes, ma'am, and thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to address certain things that has been mentioned that are not really completely accurate. While Caltrans has not sent its official quote-unquote report, Caltrans has sent an email from the Office of Chief of Airports letting the CDE facility consultant, as well as other staff, know that the site is clear and could be used, and will be sending this report within the next few days because of the timeframe involved of putting all the reports together to send to CDE. So CDE has been notified officially via email that this site is ready. That's one. As it relates to the pledges that we received and are continuing to receive because we're really pushing and fighting to stay alive, we know that we can and be able to retain and contain ECA continuing past this school year. I am not sure who CDE reached out to. We're not dealing with routers. We are really working directly with the owner of the facility, who happens at this point in time to be in Egypt out of the country. And he has told ECA that he will leave that lot to us, that we do not need, because having a lease involves continuing to pay them. And he said, "I understand your predicament. I don't want you to continue to pay me, but I want you to know that this lot is available for you, and I will work with you to make that happen." We are not working with the routers, so I'm not exactly sure who CDE talked to. And then as he relates to the current site, you saw in the video that it has been set up. Considerable amount of time and funds were invested in setting this up so that CDE would come and see it. It is ready for the students to use. And you heard the parents. We know that we will get more students to join us for the rest of the year, if allowed to do so.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate that. We appreciate all the callers. Is there a motion from the board? Member Glover Woods?
Thank you, President Darling-Hammon. I move that the CDE recommendation to adopt the final decision to revoke, to also provide notice to the Eagle Collegiate Board that replication becomes effective on March thirtieth, and also to direct Eagle Collegiate to immediately begin closure procedures set forth in their charter and the memorandum of understanding with the State Board of Education.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, Brooks, will you please call the roll for a vote?
Member Bonanca?
Aye.
President Darling-Hammon?
Yes.
Member Escobedo?
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods?
Yes.
Member Louis?
Yes.
Member McQuillan?
Aye.
Member Olken?
Abstained due to absence yesterday.
Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Yes.
Member Patilla Bronson?
Yes.
Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. I know it is very difficult when there are so many good efforts underway to have to consider all of the fiduciary aspects of running a school, but we hope that the program that has been developed will find its way into one of the neighboring schools and be available for students because the work is, it goes on, even when it does not go on in a particular site or a particular facility. Let me, at this point, move us to item twelve, which is approval of the fiscal year 2021-22 Career Technical Education Incentive Grant allocations, including the allocation formula, the specific funding amounts and number of grant awards, the purposes for grant fund use, and allowable and not allowable expenditures. And I am going to pass the ball to Pete Callis of the CDE, and Pete, you may begin.
Good morning. I'm just loading up my slides real quick.
Okay.
Good morning, President Darling-Hammon, State Board Member Superintendent Thurman and Chief Deputy Nicely. I'm Pete Callis, Division Director over the Career College Transition Division. I'm here to present the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant Program allocations. Also joining me is my administrator over the CTE Leadership Office, Colby Franklin. So we'll begin with our presentation. The California Department of Education recommends approval of the Round Seven A of the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant Program 2021-22 allocations. So I'll be doing an overview of the program, reviewing the new allocation application requirements, and then an example of how the allocation calculation works. So the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant Program was established as a state education, economic, and workforce development program for grades kindergarten through grade twelve with the knowledge and skills necessary to provide pupils in kindergarten through grades twelve with the knowledge and skills necessary to transition to employment in post-secondary education. Funding began in 2015, and it was a three-year program back then. It was nine hundred million dollars over three years. The first year, 2015, sixteen, four hundred and fifty million dollars with a one-to-one required match for LEAs. Twenty sixteen, seventeen, there were three hundred million dollars distributed with a one-to-one point five, one point five to one match required for the LEAs. And twenty seventeen, eighteen, it was a hundred and fifty million dollars distributed with a two-to-one match. The legislature for 2018-19 made this an ongoing program for California with a hundred and fifty million dollars ongoing, and it required two-to-one match for each of the LEAs. For this current school year, for 2021-22, the funds were doubled to three hundred million dollars as ongoing with a two-to-one match required for each of the LEAs. So for 2021, the CTIG allocation funding, CTIG is a formula-based competitive grant program. Seventy percent of the formula for calculation of allocations is based on the LEA's average daily attendance, their ADA. Thirty percent of the formula is based on eight positive considerations. Four of the positive considerations have a five percent weight to them, and they include organizations managed by a joint power authority. Also, another one is for their unduplicated pupil count, also high dropout rate, and high unemployment rate for their region. There are three positive considerations that are weighted at two percent. One of them is for rural LEAs. Another one is for leveraging programs such as Perkins, California Partnership Academies, and the Agriculture Incentive Grant Program. And the third piece of that is for investment in CTE equipment, facilities, and anything else related to CTE. The third set of positive considerations, the third positive consideration is weighted at four percent, and that's for collaboration, LEAs that collaborate with post-secondary programs. We had three funding groups. Four percent of the funds were earmarked, which is approximately twelve million dollars, and that's designated for LEAs with average daily attendance of less than or equal to a hundred and forty students. Eight percent of the funds, which is twenty-four million dollars, is designated for applicants with average daily attendance of more than a hundred and forty, but less than five hundred, or less than or equal to five hundred and fifty. And then eighty-eight percent of the funding, which is approximately two hundred and sixty-four million dollars, is designated for applicants with average daily attendance of more than five hundred and fifty. For 2021-22, CTIG was determined by the formula calculation or the LEA match, and they received a lower amount of those two numbers. Also this year, there was language added to our ed code for the CTE Incentive Grant Program, which states that we cannot provide any more funds above the formula calculation for their allocation. So in CTIG 21-22, Round Seven A, which is this current year, funds available were approximately three hundred million dollars. We had... Apologize for not having it on full screen. Three hundred and seventy total applications were submitted. Three hundred and forty-two of those three seventy were approved, and our distribution for this round in the allocations is just over two hundred and forty million dollars. We did have remaining funds for this year of just over fifty-nine million dollars. So we ran a Round Two, which is Round Seven B, and we received a total of forty applications. Those are being scored currently, and we will bring those grant allocations to the May State Board of Education. There were some changes to this year's application program for the CTE Incentive Grant. Total funding, as I said, doubled to three hundred million from one hundred and fifty million. Also this year, in previous years, the match was allowed to be encumbered over the two-year grant timeline. This year, the match must be encumbered during the first year of the grant. CDE was required to post the CTIG allocations at least thirty days before submitting the list recommended noon and renewal grant recipients to the State Board for review and approval. That was posted thirty days prior, our preliminary list. We did have to make some adjustments to ADAs for the consortiums that had applied. So we submitted, or we posted an updated list on February twenty eighth. Also, a change in this year's application requirements was that LEAs can include in the CTIG pathways advanced placement programs that are CTE-based, international backglow programs that were CTE-based, or dual enrollment programs that were CTE-based. So that was new language that was added to this year's ed code for CTIG. A brief example on how the calculation is run with the positive considerations and the base. So X Y Z High School has an ADA of a thousand students. Their unduplicated pupil count was nine hundred. They're considered rural. They had a high dropout rate, a high unemployment rate, and they did collaborate with post-secondary programs. So as you can see, for this school, it's above the five hundred and fifty ADA, so they're part of the larger group of the applicants for the allocations. So on average, they received ninety-five dollars for their ADA per student. So at a thousand students, they would have received ninety-five thousand, one hundred dollars for their seventy percent base. For rural, they received forty-three dollars and twelve cents per student, which comes out to about forty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. On the collaboration piece, they would get six dollars and twenty cents per student. With a thousand students, they would get sixty-two hundred dollars. Unduplicated count, they would... Unduplicated count, or they would receive six dollars and thirty-two cents per student, and that's times nine hundred students, so they would receive five thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars. For the high dropout rate, seven dollars and seventy-five cents per student, so they would receive seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty. And then the high unemployment rate was thirteen dollars and twenty-three cents per student. Times a thousand students would be thirteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. When you add up the base along with the positive consideration funding that they would receive, their total calculation would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eighty-eight dollars for the allocation. The LEA had put up a two hundred and twenty thousand dollar match, the two-to-one match. So in this example, truly an example, um the actual allocation for high school XYZ would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand and eighty-eight dollars. Now, with this example, if their total calculation had been above the two hundred and twenty thousand dollar match, they would only receive their match amount. We do not go above what their match could be. Again, uh California Department of Education recommends approval of the round seven A of the Career Technical Education Incentive Grant Program, twenty twenty-one and twenty-two allocations. Any questions? Comments?
Are there any clarifying questions for members of the board? That was a very thorough explanation.
It's a very complicated formula when you really have to break it down and make sure, you know, all your i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but
Well, you're, you're a good teacher. Thank you. I think we can proceed. Are, are you, is there anything else you wanted to present, or are we all sent? Okay. I didn't know if we were just doing clarifications. Very good. Uh so at this point, um the uh phone line should be open for public comments. We want to put that public comment slide up. And members of the public wishing to provide comment can do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. While we're ma, waiting for members of the public to call in, I want to ask members McQuillan and Rodriguez if they have any initial comments. Um and then we'll see if we have any clarifying questions, but I didn't see any yet, so. Uh Member McQuillan.
Yes, uh thank you for the great presentation, to the point. Um this is such an important area uh for our students and and the state of California. And, you know, when we think of CTE, we uh usually think of, you know, carpenters and and auto mechanics and construction technology. But we know today's CTE includes so much more, you know, health, health sciences programs, engineering, entrepreneurship, theater, theater arts, media, culinary arts, and many, many other pathways for our students. So um I just wanted to remind folks of that, that it, it's the jobs of the future for our students. I, I really appreciate how the formula turned out on this in terms of uh you know, the weighted uh acknowledgement uh for high unemployment areas in the rural areas, of course. And then uh the collaboration, acknowledging collaboration and bringing together LEAs with our uh community colleges. And that's so important, so important that people work together. And then, of course, acknowledgement of the smaller LEAs in in the formula. I also um really like that we created a second round uh for the fifty-nine million that was still remaining to create a second round for folks to apply again, um especially during the pandemic when we know folks are overwhelmed and our LEAs and and our staffs are are just trying to hold their own through the school year. So that second round, I think, has been very helpful. So thank you. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you so much. And um Member Rodriguez, would you like to add some comments?
Yes, um thank you, Member McQuillan. That was a uh a wonderful overview because it, it isn't the home ec classes um that we knew about in the past, right? You know, this is actually uh our students are able to see professionals in action. They're able to mentor and model uh with them. And for my community in particular, we do have such a high unemployment rate. And I see how our CTE pathways at my high school and throughout our community um is producing students who are learning about culinary arts, who are becoming dental hygienists. They graduate and they are on their path to go into a career. Um and these are a lot of the programs that that change the um the uh poverty that sometimes our students, you know, that, that path, right? They're able to graduate with confidence. Uh they go into deep learning with, especially using, uh you know, some of the schools that that uh employ the methods of linked learning. Uh it's very powerful to see uh, right, what we see we can become. And uh I, and it makes, it makes me excited when I see my students transformed from being disconnected from school to actually having hope that they found a career that they can uh follow and enrich their lives and their families and our community. So I really appreciate this and the second round, and uh I'm excited to see what the second round is going to look like. Thank you.
Terrific. Uh are there any other clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none, we will see if we have some callers in the queue.
Uh we have four callers in the queue. I will open the phone lines now.
Thank you.
Good morning. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. Kyle Highland on behalf of the CTJPA Coalition, an organization comprised of fourteen regional occupational programs and centers to deliver CT to more than sixty school districts in California. Our coalition was very supportive of increasing the ongoing CTE funding from one fifty to three hundred million dollars in the twenty-one, twenty-two state budget act. However, despite the significant increase, many of our members were funded below their match request for twenty-one, twenty-two. While we understand the current methodology utilized by CDE caps grantee awards at the formula eligibility amount, this non-statutory formula has also led to a remaining balance of over fifty-nine million dollars. Rather than risk CTE funds reverting back to the state, we believe that CDE could allow twenty-one, twenty-two applicants that are proposed to be funded below their match level access to the remaining dollars. There is no reason for the funds to go unspent when high-quality CT providers have the capacity to invest these resources in successful programs. Our coalition also requests that the CTE allocations and methodology be made available earlier in the fiscal year. CTE recipients rely on these funds to sustain and grow existing programs, an impossible task when recipients do not know until late in the fiscal year whether or not they'll be receiving the funds. For these reasons, we believe CD should commit to an annual schedule and train applications, approval, and distribution.
Thank you, caller. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, um President Darling Hammond and members of the board. Angela Reed on behalf of CARE, the Association of Career and College Readyness Organizations. I'd like to associate myself with the comments of Mr. Highland. And I would just add that while we are very excited to have this long-anticipated funding go out, uh there is still confusion in the field over process and so forth. We know you're working out the key, so we look forward to working with CDE and the State Board to have a more consistent and stable process and hopefully get the funds out earlier because we know we have students ready to, ready to learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, good morning, uh President Darling Hammond and members of the board. Uh this is Manuel Buenostro with California Together. Uh and I'm calling in reference to the second round of applications. Um we recommend adding to the eight uh criteria for positive consideration, a priority in education uh with an incentive for teacher preparation programs uh for high-need fields, uh including bilingual teacher CTE programs. Uh this funding could be the beginning of creating a bilingual teacher pipeline in high school and also pipelines for other high-need uh areas. Uh this would attract students who are bilingual and working towards obtaining the state seal by literacy upon graduation to pursue their credential. Uh and there's some indication of the need for this. Uh we look at much of the data from CCTC and 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 the, and the need for, for more teachers and, and these high-need fields. Uh thank you again, and have a great uh rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, Dr. Darling Hammond and board members. Diana Vu on behalf of the Association of California School Administrators. Act or Request CD make the preliminary allocations are available early in the fiscal year. The twenty twenty-one CTE allocations are just being approved even though many LEAs will begin to conclude their school year in the two months, uh in the next two months, which means that the fund invested by the state for the current fiscal year will not be available for use for the school year. This is particularly challenged because of the new requirement for this year for the LEAs in September. It's matching funds in the same fiscal year. Without knowing until late in the fiscal year whether CTE funds were coming, LEAs were forced to set aside funds that could have been used to apply for other great opportunities such as K through twelve strong, strong workforce programs. In addition, Act or Request CD published the allocation methodology at the same time. Releasing the preliminary allocation in conjunction with methodology is not only best practice, but is often the best interest of trade parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending in one zero zero zero, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Okay, it looks like that concludes public comment for item number twelve.
All right. Thank you very much. So we're here now open for a discussion from the board. Um I do want to make one note. There was a caller who talked about launching teaching academies or teaching pathways. Uh and uh there is a proposal in the January budget uh from the governor's office to do precisely that, to put one point eight billion dollars towards uh pathways that would include uh STEM pathways, computer science pathways, uh green technology pathways, and teaching pathways. So uh hopefully, we will be able to be talking about and looking at those um sometime in the near future. Uh I see a um hand up. Wait, it, it came and it went. There uh Member Olken, did you have your hand up for a second? Okay. The, the Zoom board also shifted on me, so I saw the hand and then the Zoom shifted. Uh Member Banaka, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um I just really want
I think you may be freezing on us. Okay, try again. Why don't you go back to the beginning?
Hopefully, it's working now. Gosh.
It is now. It is.
All right. Um I just want to applaud the efforts in developing this formula and applaud the, and just thank um thank Peter um for the, the presentation. And I also want to say that I think that CTE is not only practical in the sense that it helps prepare students for careers, but I think just the fact that students are able to focus on their passions and develop that into something that they can do for a living um is just such an incredible opportunity for students. And I also think that it really helps students engage with what they're doing at school. And then also in the formula, I really appreciate the weight of the unduplicated pupil count, um the high dropout rate and the high employment rate um that is considered when um giving out these grants. And so, yeah, I, I just really applaud these efforts, and I'm really glad that we're working on this.
Any other comments? Or questions? I want, I do want to clarify, um Pete, that uh my understanding is that by statute, we're not permitted to fund up to the match. We have to fund to the uh formula. Is that right? And you're on mute. You're talking to yourself on mute.
Yeah, in the past, they've been able to do some things with the formula to add share funding to them to get them closer to the match. There is actually language that was added this year that does not allow us to do that. So it's very clear in the language now that they either get their calculated amount or if it goes beyond that, they only get their match.
Okay, um Member McQuillan.
Yeah, just to follow up uh related to the caller who called in asking for uh an addition to support, I think bilingual teachers and, and uh what, what you mentioned uh uh chairperson, that um the one billion plus that's in the proposed governor's, uh would this include um supporting bilingual teacher development?
It would.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh so I'm, I'm excited for the possibilities that we could start to address our teacher needs and shortages by getting kids excited about teaching in high school. I think Member Glover Woods has a hand up.
Yes, thank you. Um just wanted to ask a quick question around the um timeline for the allocations. Uh because we're looking at allocations, I believe, and Pete, correct me if I'm wrong, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, which will be coming to a close in a couple of months. Um is that the typical timeline that we use? And are the awardees required to expend these funds within the twenty-one, twenty-two school year? That's my first question, or first and second.
So, so our goal was to get them out sooner, and we had all the applications in and scored. And once the um trailer bill language came out with new requirements, we had to make a shift and add two addendums to the application process, which delayed us in getting the allocations processed sooner. If there are no changes in language for this coming school year, um we should have them to the board by no later than a November board meeting for approval. That's our goal. And if we can do it by September, that would be even better for us. Um to answer the second part of your question, they have until December twenty twenty-three to extend these funds.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for members of the board? And if there are not, uh I will invite a motion. Do we have a motion?
Yes, uh can we get the screen back up, the, the recommendation?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And thank you for a wonderful presentation, very complete.
Thank you.
Um so uh I move that the uh State Board um follow the recommendation that the CDE has provided here.
All right, do we have a, do we have a second? Uh Member McQuillan, did I see you shaking your hand? Okay.
I second that motion.
Thank you very much. Uh any further discussion? Uh Brooks, can you call the roll for a vote?
Member Banaka.
Aye.
President Darling Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Aye.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and thank you, Pete. Uh we're now going to take a break for about ten minutes. It is uh nine fifty-eight. Let's be generous and go till ten-ten. See you back at ten-ten. Don't, don't leave the meeting. Just turn off your video and your mic. Um we're going to resume, uh and Brooks, will you please call the roll to reestablish the quorum?
Member Banaka.
Here.
President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Present.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member Roscoe Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Here.
Everyone's present. We have a quorum.
Okay, um so the public comment slide has been up. Um and we are going to take our waiver consent counter, which includes waiver items uh W one through eight. Uh the comment line has been open since before the break, so we'll go ahead and take public comment right away. Are there any public comments for W one through eight?
There are no callers on the queue for public comment.
All right. Um given that there's no other public comment, I'll ask for a motion on waivers uh W one through eight. Do I have a motion?
So moved?
Thank you. Do I have a Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll now hold a roll call vote. Brooks, can you please call the roll?
Member Benaka.
Aye.
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Aye.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right. I'm now going to reopen item 1 to take action on the preliminary report of actions of draft January 2022 meeting minutes and to report on our liaison assignment. And so the, while we're waiting for any members of the public to call in, we filled the public comments slide up. Do I have a motion from board member to approve the January 2022 State Board of Education draft preliminary report of action meeting minutes?
They're moved.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any public comments?
There are no callers for public comments.
Okay, so at that, at that moment, then we just need to see if there's any further discussion. I'm seeing none. And this time, we're going to raise our hands in the participant panel of the Zoom so Brooks can keep track of raised hands. I don't know, I guess that's if you have a comment. You don't have a comment. Those are my script. We'll now hold a roll call vote. Brooks, please call the roll.
Member Benaka.
Aye.
President Darlene Hammond.
Yes.
Member Escobedo.
Yes.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Abstain.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Abstain.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Abstain.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Not abstaining, and yes.
Thank you for that clarity. Uh, Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that was easy. Now I want to invite the State Board members to report out on any liaison activities that are not related to any items on our March agenda. And although I will not call on our new board members today for that purpose, at the end of our liaison reports, I will call on them if they have other comments and say a few words about them. So we'll start with student member Rhonda Benaka.
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. To begin with, in January, I attended a discussion hosted by the California Student Board Member Association, or CSBMA, about the 2022 revision of the state math framework. And I was able to hear a multitude of opinions and perspectives on the proposed framework from student board members throughout the state and even perspectives from adults like math professors and advocates. And of course, I was diligently taking notes because I know that we are set to take action on this framework in our July meeting. And then I also attended a National Student Board Member Association meeting where I was able to learn from the experiences and the insights of student board members throughout the nation. And I really love to hear about how they all approach hearing student voice, which is, of course, really important to student board members. And so in that same vein, I'm currently working on organizing statewide virtual student forums so that I can hear input from students throughout the state about the issues that they're passionate about and the issues that they care about most. And then I'm also starting to work with the California Association of Student Councils, or CASC, to plan more ways that the student board member on the State Board, or me this year, can increase their collaboration with CASC moving forward, whether that be through hosting student town halls or giving reports at CASC conferences on statewide updates and things of that nature. And so I'm looking forward to that. And then finally, in terms of the mask mandate being lifted just in time for school on Monday, I want to remind students to be respectful of other people's decisions. I know that I've already seen discussions in my school about it and students are, or some students, I should say, are already making fun of other students for their decisions of whether or not to wear a mask. And more often than not, I see that students that are choosing to continue to wear their mask are being poked fun at and made fun of a bit more, which is really. Just want to remind students that mask wearing is still strongly recommended. But at the end of the day, once the mandate is lifted, we need to be respectful of each other's choices. And that concludes my liaison report.
Thank you, and thank you for that very important comment and reminder. We really appreciate that. Member Escobedo.
Yes, as part of being a liaison for WestEd. WestEd has been very busy in gearing up for the 2022. Just last week, AIR was part of a keynote address with, with, I mean, WestEd was part of a keynote address with AIR at the National Association of School Principals in DC. It gathered many of the elementary and middle school leaders across the country. And they highlighted a real interesting study. It was a study on Entitled Leaders We Need Now research series. And they conducted, WestEd conducted 36 focus groups with 188 principals across the nation. And there were three tenants that I would love to bring up. One was that during this time, there was some real specific school innovations and new perspectives that have been created or discovered, you know, from this COVID time. And basically, some of the learnings, specifically in how the use of remote instructional technology helped in some cases, obviously, supplement and extend learning and the importance of flexible staffing as well. And then a second finding was really the evolution of the principalship, especially during this pandemic year that will continue on, will continue in the sense of crisis management and the importance of communicating effectively, especially in a highly politicized local community and the importance of balancing vocal and ardent groups. And then, and then the third finding is the finding on focus on policy. And I, you know, as I read through some of the recommendations, I'm so proud of being part of a CDE because many of the recommendations, such as, you know, creating metrics to capture how well schools are supporting the whole child and funding for in-school mental and physical health support, how we're doing this. I mean, it's, it's heartwarming to see that some of this research is being applied in California. And something that you may be interested in is a COVID-19 accelerated learning recovery plan has been created by WestEd. You could go onto their site and find their, their resources. It focused on equitable outcomes from underserved students, research to improve strategy and decision-making, some real focus on instructional support, content-focused instructional support, and more focus on safe and healthy conditions for improved learning. Thank you, that's the end of my report.
Terrific, that's really interesting. Thank you. I think our next person is Vice President Glover Woods.
Thank you. The majority of my liaison assignments were covered in this month's agenda items. The only part that I would add is I had an opportunity to observe the Instructional Quality Commission meeting that took place in January. And they took action forward to put together their subject matter committees as well as electing their chairs and co-chairs. And the IQC is up and ready for the business that will be coming before them in the future. Thank you.
Terrific. Member McQuillan.
Thank you. Not a whole lot to report. We are waiting for the, the Joint Commission on Career Technical Education to find a date that works. We've had to cancel the past couple. I think we're waiting for additional board members to be seated. And the tentative date for the next joint committee is March 25th. And that's where members of our State Board of Education pull together with the members of the community colleges of California, board members on that committee. So aiming for March 25th, if that works. I also wanted to report that CDE has selected two sites to work on the Model American Indian Curriculum for California. And those two sites are San Diego County Office of Education and Humboldt County Office of Education were selected to develop and pull together the model curriculum on Native American Studies for California. We're happy about that. It's kind of up in here in my neck of the woods, Humboldt Deloitte area. They call it behind the redwood curtain. There was only 300,000 allocated for that work between the two sites. So it's a little underfunded, so we're hoping that additional funds will be added to that effort. But that's very good news, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That's really good news about the curriculum getting rolling. That's historic. Uh, Member Patillo Bronson.
Good morning. I wanted to highlight a couple of meetings that focus on that connection between the early years, early learning, pre-K, TK, up to the third grade timeframe. I think I had mentioned previously that there is a UPK kitchen cabinet being co-convened by a number of state leaders and led by Sarah Neville Morgan, very aptly, in terms of really shining a light on the importance of the universal TK rollout. I've also been in conversation with a number of school districts who are very busily getting ready for the new school year and thinking about both what it takes to communicate through the ranks of school districts, the value proposition that transitional kindergarten and UPK, universal pre-K, offer in terms of preparation for K-12 success and also for eliminating and preventing the achievement gap. I think that communication challenge is one side on one, in terms of communications to LEAs. And then, of course, there is the broader set of communications that will be necessary to make sure that families understand what a meaningful offering is being made available in California because it really is unprecedented. And it's exciting also to be in conversations with leaders from other states who are watching California and cheering us on to get this right. There's also been a number of recent meetings, and I've been doing these more in Southern California, to look at what is the pipeline for the 24-unit requirement and what both districts can offer in-house in terms of those necessary sort of educational units, but also what partnerships can be had with higher ed. Related to that, I think, hearing and now seeing sort of the trickle of information in terms of assessments as to where, where we have lost ground and where there are opportunities to really accelerate both gains, but also just ongoing progress in third-grade reading. The trailer bill language articulating that some of the community schools' funding can be used for reading specialists, as well as literacy coaches, I think is really exciting, as well as the budget, the governor's budget proposal for the $500 million to focus on that, to make sure that kids by third grade are where we need them to be so that the rest of their, their K-12 trajectory is about learning beyond, but they have that foundation squarely under their belt. It's been an interesting process of learning how few programs can offer the reading specialist credential on an expedited basis because obviously, the emergency is now and we want to make sure that kids have access to these specialty, specially trained teachers and adults who can help them accelerate their learning and reading progress as quickly as possible. And then the last thing I'll just say, which is more on the wraparound services, just hearing California highlighted for the CalEITC work for working families. And again, recognizing that students, children live in the context of families. And however, there are a whole set of available resources for their families to be well and economically secure matter. And the, starting to, to track some of the partnerships that are happening with LEAs to actually promote some of these offerings so that families can be well as their children are on their own wellness journeys in schools. And that concludes my report.
Terrific, thank you. So many exciting things happening that are getting off the ground right now. It's wonderful to hear all of the ways in which people are experiencing them. Uh, Member Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, President Darlene Hammond. So first of all, I want to start out, I have three reports. One of them is Tamo, the Regional EL Specialists. The other, CISA, some California Summer School for the Arts. And then lastly, CTC. But one of the things that I want to acknowledge and recognize that in the last two years, we have all worked in ways that we never imagined, doing something that we didn't really, weren't prepared and really didn't know how to do. And, you know, starting with the leadership at the state level, you know, our governor setting the example, or support from the state legislature. And these last meetings that I attended, I'm just so optimistic about seeing this progress and successes and upward trends. And again, especially during, you know, as we're literally building the plane while we're flying it. And it just goes to show how strong and creative and innovative and adaptable we are in meeting the needs of our, of our students and our teachers. And, you know, when I'm talking about adaptability, I'm talking about parents, students, the bodies that we're all, you know, that we all sit on, whether it's as policymakers or liaisons. So I just really want to acknowledge that. And thank you to everyone who has modeled this California way attitude. So I'll start with Tamo. And for the new members in the public, I'll just, you know, talk a little bit about the acronym. It's Technical Assistance and Monitoring Office. On Wednesday, March 2nd, Tamo hosted the Regional EL Specialists. And what a powerful and inspiring meeting it was. There's a lot to celebrate. And first, I'd like to acknowledge the leadership of Teresa Hock, Jackie Gula, Dlamini, I'm sorry, he goes by GQ. And Ivan Tiet. The support that they have provided county offices and the regional EL specialists is at the core of the success that was shared at this meeting. Yes, they have challenges ahead. One of the members of the team has taken a job within another department and they still have a lot of the important work to do conducting the reviews for the ALCAPS. And there were, a few of the Ewig Partners, Ewig Educator Workforce Investment Grant, shared about some of the highlights that they have experienced in the last, in the last couple of years. First, Dr. Ana Castro from GAVE and MCAP shared some, some of these progresses. They've held two statewide summits. The MCAP team meets monthly. They have delivered training to paraeducators, language training because they have requested to know more. And so that's exciting, right? You know, for the paraeducators to receive some of these powerful programs that they've put together. Nine asynchronous academies. And very exciting, they've launched parent innovation programs where they have served the parents, helping them work closely with their children at home and supporting them with technology platforms. and supporting them with technology platforms. They're also working to improve the bilingual teacher preparation programs. Next, Dr. Magali Lavadens, her name came up yesterday with EL Rise and LMU. And our team have done some vigorous work with English Learner Master Plan Playbook, which, by the way, it's available for download, and it's just a fantastic resource for anybody working with the EL students, whether it's, you know, the leadership at the LEA or teachers in the classroom, para professionals. I suggest downloading it and planning accordingly. The team has created, has worked to create clarity across the state. They have far exceeded their original goal and have worked with 45 county offices across California and have reached over 500 participants. They're working with colleagues to create visionary policies. Patricia Carlin of San Diego County Office of Education shared that she has used the playbook and has created a Google Doc that LEAs can use as a template and leave their examples. And this is a great, a great way to highlight the collaboration and sharing best practices. Then a regional recap, the the regional leads presented, they talked about, they had five minutes to talk about the successes they were having and then some of the challenges that they were facing. And generally, some of the successes is the work around parent support, especially talking about trauma and, you know, resilience, being able to understand some of the barriers that students are facing and giving the parents access to support their their children at home. Some of the barriers are are some of the barriers that we have seen, right? The lack of data just because of, you know, our our testing changes in because of the pandemic and for reclassification purposes, and also just a sense of general exhaustion because of the plates that people are juggling. One of the things that G Q said is that, you know, the goal is for the LEAs to avoid solely a compliance centered model. And, you know, when he's conducted reviews, oftentimes LEAs are using instruments that are three or four or even 10 years old. And so he's really trying to get into a service centered rather than a compliance centered model. And I really like, you know, that going into into the future that way. Next, with CTC. Many of the members of the commission and Executive Director Sandy shared touching anecdotes and tributes and very heartfelt tributes to Assembly Member and State Senator Gary Hart, who passed away in January and who was such a big part of CTC. And, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the changes that have had happened within the last couple of decades. And the work continues with the two design teams of E C, Early Childhood Education Experts, advising the commission on the development of both the E C E teacher performance assessments and the new program quality peer review process. They're continuing to move the initial developmental work to the pilot testing and which will happen around late spring 2022. The four E C pilots are continuing to support implementation of this transformative work, moving toward the T P aligned curriculum and instruction within E C preparation programs, as well as towards supporting the programs to complete a self analysis regarding how close they are to meeting the commission's adopted program guidelines that address quality prep for the E C workforce. Next, there was a report on the residency programs. The C T staff developed a timeline for the request for applications for the new teacher residency grant competitions authorized by Assembly Bill 130. Findings from the second year of the teacher residency program during a global pandemic were presented at the meeting. The highlights were centered around enrollment, completion, and hiring findings from an analysis of data collected about the first two cohorts in residence. Recommendations from a newly released brief, teacher residency programs in California. Financial sustainability, challenges, and opportunities include the following. Grantee programs have made progress toward key outcomes challenging conditions including or included. They highlight the importance of the residencies. Their plans for future sustainability. The, let's see, grant funding remains available for the encumbrance through June 30th, 2023. A final report is due from the commission probably in December 2022 because it will, it'll be for the policy committees and state legislator. So once we, that is complete, I will return with the report. And next, there was a very strong and robust conversation about ed TPAs. There, you know, one of the questions that that commissioners and people from the public would like to see addressed in further research and further studies is, you know, what is it? Is it the context about ed TPA that seems to be tough for teachers of color to pass the performance assessments? There, you know, while there were some people that were were calling in and saying, we'd like to see more evidence. There, the thought is that context matters, right? And so there are a few studies that, you know, are showing how powerful the TPAs are for teachers that they feel prepared when they go into the classroom. And some of the public and some of the commissioners would like to look into those studies a little bit more and answer some of the questions of, is there a barrier? What is it? And how can we work to make sure that we, that that this isn't a gatekeeper for teachers of color to come into the profession? There, the student liaison said that, you know, she has found that the ed TPA, she was actually going through it at the time that the meeting was happening and how much she appreciated the reflective practice, which is what the ed TPA intended. You know, she said she had, you know, had to question like why she did this, the focus of equity, right? Which was another intention of the ed TPA. And how prepared she felt to confront the challenges of the classroom. It was, it was interesting because a commissioner who used to be one of the public members representing CISA, talked about how when the ed TPAs were first adopted, he was a little bit reluctant. He thought it was another bureaucratic hurdle. And as a human resource employer, he, and this is Commissioner Simmons, said that he has noticed how well prepared the teachers who are with the ed TPAs, how how ready they are to handle the challenges ahead of them. So it was a very interesting discussion, and there will be more on that. Executive Director Sandy, you know, said that we'll bring it back in a very transparent way to reflect and to answer the initial question of the purpose and how to make sure that they can confront the barriers that they're seeing, especially when it comes to teachers of color. And then lastly, another acronym, CISA, not CISA, the California State Summer School for the Arts. And this is for the new members, if you're not familiar, a rigorous professional, pre professional month long training program in the visual and performing arts, creative writing, animation, and film for talented artists of high school age. CISA provides a supportive environment in which students hone acquired skills and explore new techniques and ideas for an intense and exciting learning experience. The school was created by the California Legislature and held its first session in 1987. And the purpose is to provide a training ground for future artists who wish to pursue careers in the arts and entertainment industries in California. Applications for summer school have closed with, so this is the update, with 1,000 applicants. And that is a big deal because that signifies an upward trend. There have been a couple of difficult years, and CISA is definitely recovering. The 2022 application deadline was Monday, it's past Monday, at 6:00 PM. And as always, it was a rush to the finish with 70% of the applicants arriving within the last 48 hours of the deadline. Applicants are up from last year, and this is really good. But they have not reached pre pandemic levels. This year, the board decided to limit the program to only students from California because of COVID. If somebody would contract, would be COVID positive? If they're, you know, from France or China, how will they, you know, be as be sent home if they're COVID positive? So only California students applied this year. But last year, there were 895 applications. The overall applications have, were started steadily declining since their peak of 2017. But the uptick this year is encouraging. Visual arts and writing are under the six year average. The other departments have larger decreases, including animation, which is the most competitive program historically. The increased tuition may also have been a factor. Executive Director Matt Gallagher will be researching the data further and report back soon on race, ethnicity, stats, percentage of the applicants with financial aid and more. So stay tuned and thank you always so much for your support.
Thank you. I will just piggyback on a couple of the reports that have been made to note that as several folks have said, TK is rolling out across the state. There's a lot of work going on on the workforce question. The CTC is going to be approving the requirements for an early childhood credential shortly. And that will be accessible not only through the multiple subjects pathway where teachers can add 24 units, but also for early childhood educators or people trained in early childhood to come in and be credentialed for, to build on what they've already accomplished in their permits. And then to be credentialed for early childhood from age three through, I think they're calling it three through three. Age three through grade three is, I think, the strategy that they're pursuing. So I wanted to be sure that people understand, particularly those who are trying to think about how to staff TK programs. There's also going to be some guidance coming out shortly that will provide guidance for how in the short run, districts and county offices that are involved in this can staff up from multiple sources of supply. There are 30,000 folks in the assist, in the early childhood system who have the bachelor's degree and most of the requirements for a credential already. And then, of course, folks from the elementary school side of the equation as well. And then the other thing I just wanted to note, building on Member Patio Bronson's comments about literacy coaches and reading specialists, those, that is a proposal in the January budget for $500 million to help tiny districts to develop and extend their reading programs with literacy coaches who are trained. There will be a training program attached and reading specialists who can work one on one in small groups with kids. There has, there's extraordinary data available about the impacts of high intensity tutoring for rapidly enabling students to regain ground, both in math and English language arts. We have another grant proposal going out to provide training for those tutors in reading and English language arts who use and mathematics, who use vetted, highly effective curriculum and strategies to help students really catch up quickly. And so I want people to be aware that that is going on. There will be grants issued for several county offices in the in the coming days or weeks. It's imminent to begin providing that kind of training for strategies for learning acceleration that can be used in multi tiered systems of support, can be used in regular classrooms, and can be used in the after school and summer school contexts where we have new resources going out. So lots going on all across the state. I do want to give our new board members an opportunity to say a few words. We needed, when you first arrived, to get to a closed session meeting, which you had a chance to participate in, but we didn't have a chance to say very much about you or hear very much from you. So I just wanted to take this opportunity for at least a brief introduction to each of you. I'm going to start with Brenda because she's in the middle of the alphabet. And, you know, we sometimes start at the end, we start sometimes start at the beginning, we hardly ever start in the middle. And if you ever play bidwist, some people will know bidwist goes uptown and downtown. But some people want to create a form of bidwist that starts in the middle of the deck of cards. Dr. Brenda Lewis retired as an associate superintendent, I think, from the Kern High School District. She got her start with a master's degree in physical education and has a doctorate in organizational leadership. She led the instruction division, curriculum and instruction, professional development, student supports and discipline, athletics and activities, assessment and accountability. So she's very familiar with our basket of work here at the State Board, local control accountability plan, equity and inclusion, and two district level student advisory councils. She was also the grand marshal of the Black American History Month Parade in Bakersfield, which I would have loved to have seen, and has, has a long career and experience in Bakersfield. So we want to welcome you to the board. And Brenda, if you have some things you'd like to share, we would love to hear your thoughts.
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. And, you know, I'll start by saying yesterday, in my introductory comments, I said I was excited and honored to be a part of this, this board. And I want you to know that after yesterday and today, I'm still excited. Okay? No, I, I, I truly, I mean, you've given my background. I've been, I was at the district for 33 years and, again, had the opportunity to participate in a lot of different areas, wore a lot of different hats in administration along the way. And I will say, yesterday and so far today, it has, it's been a rewarding experience. I, I admire each of you for, you know, the time that you've been on this board and continuing on the board because we cover a lot of agenda items, a lot of issues coming from different topics in different directions and have to take into consideration statute and law and what's best for kids on the school site. And also, a couple of them, I will say, tug at your heartstrings over the last couple of days. But we, you know, we have to, to, to do what's best in the overall big picture for students. And, you know, my comments may go everywhere, but I love Rana. I love the fact that there was a student on this board. I just left the district and wasn't able to serve with the student. We just put a student on the, the board in the district that I left. But some of the things I hear and all of the things that are going on behind the scenes with the members, different groups that they are working with or committees. It's a lot of work and I'm ready to dive in wherever needed to enroll up my sleeves and get started to provide what knowledge that I can and expertise that I can bring to the board and to help in any way possible. And, again, just looking forward to the work that we have ahead of us and being a contributor to to our work and a good teammate to my fellow board members. And again, Rana, I can't say enough about students. I love mentoring. I love working with students. And to see you and just hear you the last couple of days. I mean, if, if, if we would, if President Darlene Hammond wouldn't have introduced you as a student, I think someone would have thought you were a staff member somewhere by your comment and your intellect. So thank you for that. And student voice is so important. So good luck with your efforts and bringing together that virtual meeting statewide to bring students together because for so long, it was just the adults in the room. But the students add a great voice, a great perspective. But the students add a great voice, a great perspective uh to a lot of issues and it keeps us on our toes. So thank you for that. And to my fellow board members, I'm just looking forward to the work we have ahead of us. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you. And all of the new board members know that they will be um having the opportunity to take up their liaison assignments uh shortly. So uh, we'll be hearing more from you in that capacity by next time. I'm gonna go to Gabriella Roscoe Gonzalez. Uh, that goes either way in the alphabet, depending on which name you use. Uh, she is an elementary school teacher and has taught in Montebello Unified School District for over twenty years. She's taught kindergarten through sixth grade. So she's gone uh up and down the, the ladder with uh the kids and knows how they develop at every age and stage. She is a Common Core Standards Expert, uh Curriculum and Assessment Writer, Master Teacher and Mentor. In addition, she's a teacher leader for the Instructional Leadership Corps, which is a wonderful uh group of a couple of hundred teachers across the state um who have been uh helping us with the uh shifts in instructional practice associated with the Common Core state standards. Uh, and have been doing just uh incredible work. I had the opportunity to participate in an evaluation of the program and the evaluation comments from other teachers about having teachers in their districts leading them through this process were so positive uh and so inspiring. She's a national presenter on Common Core Instructional Tips and Teacher Leadership, and she's also a blogger. And she writes about teaching strategies, curriculum, and educational resources. For, so for those of us who like to geek out on those topics, uh, there's a new blog for us to find. Uh, Gabriella, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, thank you. Um, again, really excited, just like member Lewis, about being part of this board. Um, very fortunate to have a voice as an elementary school teacher. I've taught twelve, um, second grade for twelve years now. And it really, um, I think of uh Ms. Bronson, how you mentioned about reading literacy and how important for um to support um as our students are in that developmental stage of learning to read. And this whole two days has been a whirlwind, but I've really had several items that I know that I'm really passionate about. I mean, I think about item number two and assessments. I started um the work with Common Core when it was first introduced in two thousand and ten. And as an assessment writer and item reviewer, I really um think that I can bring a voice to those topics as they present to the board. Um, I also think about item six and how, about job quality and safe, safety and then, and just workplaces and adult education, family literacy, all programs that I've worked really closely with in my district and I've brought into when I work with ILC and work, my collaboration with the California Teachers Association and building partnerships with families. Um, some of the things that I've done in our local districts in Downey and in Montebello and in the LA area is really bringing parent connections into the classroom and building those partnerships with students. So Rana, I also think about how important it is to have student voice and um really build those communities um of learners where we collaborate as educators with not only the community, with parents and, and including the student voice continuously in everything that we do in education, how that impact is um, is just enormous in our school district. So um, just learning, I'm a listener right now and just kind of taking it all in, but I know that I can contribute as time goes on. I just want to make sure that I, I have the right pockets to, to insert my thoughts into. But thank you for this opportunity and I'm excited to collaborate.
Terrific. And Sharon Olken. Uh, Sharon ha- has been the Executive Director of Gateway Public Schools in San Francisco, uh, which is a middle and a high school that were really initially founded by parents of students with disabilities uh to create an inclusive and effective learning environment. Uh, she's been there for more than twenty years as a teacher, a school leader, and a school founder. Uh, I've learned a lot from Sharon. She is a graduate of the Stanford Teacher Education Program who we have tapped many times for advice and counsel on uh special education needs and on a variety of other things. Um, she um uh helps the students discover their unique potential, what they love, the impact they hope to make on their communities in this very diverse student community. She recently founded Everyday Leadership, a website dedicated to providing models of positive leadership and helping others cultivate their power and their voice. Sharon?
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. And um, I, I can't tell you how much I've learned from you over the years. So I'm honored and flattered that you uh turned that around on me. And um, I just want to say I'm so um humbled to be on this board with you all and to, when you, when you said yesterday, we are serving six point two million students in the state of California, um, I got butterflies in my stomach uh because that is such a exciting and huge responsibility and one I feel um just really honored to be able to um be part of. Um, I, those of, those who know me at Gateway know that um I try my best to speak without acronyms as much as possible and uh keep sort of the intent of what we're doing front and center, which is for me all about um the well-being and sense of agency of our students. Um, so I have a lot of learning to do about the acronyms. I'm keeping a, I'm keeping a running list. Um, but what I've learned so far in just the brief time I've been here is um all those acronyms, if you get past trying to figure out, trying to remember what they are, they're all doing amazing work that's making um our schools better places for our students first and foremost, but also for our staff. Um, and it's, it's really um, well, I've, I've, I've been a strong believer in the importance of the, this, the local context. You know, the importance, when I first got in education, I thought I wanted to do education policy work. And then when I became a teacher, it's like, no, the real work happens in the classroom. Um, and I've stayed as close as I can to kids throughout my career. Um, but even in the, the short time I've been here mostly listening, I can see that the marriage of really good policy and really good schools is how you make major change for kids. Um, and so I'm excited to be on this team and learning from you all and um hopefully helping us do more good for our young people who are gonna help us make our state and the world a better place because we know there's a lot of work to do, so.
Indeed, there is. And thank you. We're thrilled to have all of you join us in doing that work. Um, and uh, we are now ready to take up our last item, which is item thirteen. General public comment. Public comment is invited on any matter not included in the printed agenda. I think we want to see the comment. There we go. We'll open the phone line for the public comment queue and members of the public wishing to provide comment may do so by calling the number shown on the public comment slide and using the access that is shown there. Uh, we remind you to turn down the volume of your computer uh or if you're listening to the live webcast to avoid background echoes. Uh, are there any public comments?
There are no public comments for, for item thirteen.
President Darlene, we understand that there's a little bit of a lag in the feed, so maybe we just give thirty more seconds as a lag.
We'll do a little wait time.
Okay, and still no more callers. We're, feel free to go ahead. Thank you.
All right. I hereby adjourn our March twenty twenty-two State Board meeting at eleven oh one A M. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you at our May meeting. And if we're fortunate, we may be in person. Take care.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome, new members. So happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.